This is so early.
Hey.
This is wounded.
This is.
Everyone, we will wait for two minutes and if National Grid will not show up, we will reschedule our public hearing for National Grid. Hmm.
Will you come sit?
I'll sit.
They trust you with their team?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Today, October 28th, I would like to call the Utilities Committee meeting to order all co-policemen.
Counselor Allenson?
Present.
Present. Counselor McLean?
Present.
Present. Counselor Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counselor Mejimadre?
Present.
Present.
All right. To those who are watching, our apology, there's an event today at City Hall, so our National Grid guy cannot find parking. He's here now. We have seven items on the agenda. Madam Clerk, can you just please read the whole thing?
Okay, we have Bella, Bella Street and 37 Dorinda Circle to install a joint own pole, Bella Street and 37 Dorinda Circle to install conduit to provide service, 21 Oxford Street to install two joint own poles for service, Oxford and Buffham Street to install conduit to a heavy-duty handhole, Oxford and Buffham Street to install conduit from the handhole to the property line, Lawton and Rogers Ave to install conduit to connect overhead transformer former on pole number 19, and Fairmount Ave and Wonderland Terrace in Saugus to install two joint own poles for service in a new development.
Anybody here wish to speak in favor? Sir, name, address for the record, please.
Good evening. John Jankowski, 170 Medford Street in Malton, Mass.
It looks like it's all joint pole conduit. You can just, just explain the whole thing in the combo, please.
Okay, on Bella Air at 37 Circle, installing a joint own pole for a new service and then going to siphon down on that pole, digging up about 10 feet of PVC conduit. 21 Oxford Street in Lynn, constructing a new building to provide service. We have to come down on Oxford Street for two wooden poles and then the last pole we're going to siphon down on Oxford Street to a heavy-duty handle at the corner of Oxford and Buffham and install conduit from that heavy-duty handle on Buffham Street, about 80 feet to private property. On Wonderland Terrace, there's a new development, so we're going to come from Fairmount Ave, set a pole, setting a pole on Wonderland Terrace, and that's on, the new development is on Saugus. And the last one is on Lawton and Rogers Ave.
Rogers.
We're going to install conduit to new overhead, overhead transformer. There is low voltage in that area, so we're going to try to resolve the problem.
Okay, so we, I discussed this with Councillors Mathieu, Councillors Mejimadre, and Councillor Walsh, and they have no questions or concerns. To all members of this committee, do you have any questions for our National Grid guy?
We want to reiterate, we're opening up these streets that we put them back the way that they were. We got a lot of new streets getting repaved in our city. None of these streets award six, but I see our councils that definitely had a lot of new streets done, so we just want to make sure that they put the streets back the way they were.
Noted that, sir.
Yep.
Okay, let's finish the public hearing. You can sit down, sir. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition? Opposition? Oppositions, seeing now this public hearing is closed, what is the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Motion, any second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McLean, approved by Counselor Hogan. Madam Clerk, is there any new and old business?
No other business.
No business? What is the wish of the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
To Jeff Whedon here to give us an update. Jeff?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for inviting me. Jeff Whedon with the Lynn Housing Authority, 10 Church Street in Lynn. Really excited to be here. We have some great news, but I want to first start with some context of how we got here. If you remember back in, this all started back in 2016 with the Baker administration. They provided letters to the city, the city council, I believe the school department and the housing authority to see if there's any use for the armory building. It was owned by DCAM. DCAM had control of it, the state, and they wanted to see if there was a public use for the city. At the time, no one stepped forward, and we were working on a veterans grant with the United Way, and this seemed like a seamless fit for us to continue to prioritize veterans' housing. So we put in a proposal. During that time, we did our due diligence. We did schematics to see if that would work. We talked with state HLC to see if they were, this was a project that would be worth getting low-income housing tax credits. All that seemed to check out, and we moved forward, and we did a legislative transfer from the state to the, our nonprofit that we administer, Neighborhood Development Associates. And so that happened in August of 2018. In 2019, we took possession of the building. So I'll flip forward, go through the timeline. You can see what I just mentioned, the closing in January of 2019. At that point, once we took ownership of the building, we were able to apply for low-income housing tax credits with the state, along with historic tax credits, both with the federal government and the state. And you can see where I put historic tax credits in January of 2019, but also August of 2025. The way historic tax credits work for the state is that you apply three times a year. So although it may look like there's a large gap of time where we're not doing anything, we're actually still applying for historic tax credits each year, three times a year, and that is still ongoing. Then you can see the LIHTC, that is Low Income Housing Tax Credit Applications. We've had to update that four different times, partly because of market conditions, partly because of a redesign that we did to try to value engineer and make this the most efficient and cost-efficient building that we could possibly provide. And then, since then, we have been, we've received a building permit this year and also a variance for the Architectural Access Board as well. So we've been moving forward with this. The building consists of a headhouse, a drill shed, and a detached garage. The headhouse will have units. The drill shed will have atrium-style units, if you can see the diagram, the rendering. And then the detached garage will also have townhouse-style units in that as well, 16 units in that detached piece.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. How many units will it be altogether?
Altogether, it's 52 units.
Fifty-two.
Yep. And then that brings me to the next page, and this is some really exciting news. We did get awarded 2.5 million from the Executive Office of Veterans Services from the state. That is part of their opera funds to end homelessness for veterans. So that was really exciting. That just happened at the end of last year and into this year. And then, as of yesterday, we had a business meeting with all our funders, and we set a date for a closing. So we're looking to close. You can see the date here, January of 2026. So that gives us three months to get all, everything set for the closing. So we're really excited. That just happened yesterday, so it's a good time to be here to update the council.
Okay, that's awesome. My questions are about the tenants. Is it co-ed? Is it going to be only single people? Is it, does it include families?
So we're not limiting it, but the units themselves are more conducive for singles. We do have a few two-bedrooms in the headhouse, so if that was to have, we're not going to, like I said, we're not limiting it, but if that was to, an option that was viable, then we would consider that, yeah.
Counselor Hogan?
Now, is this priority, Lynn residents' priority?
Yeah, so as part of the closing, we're going to put a percentage of Lynn residents, yeah, local preference.
Do you know what that percentage is going to be yet?
Well, we're hoping 70. We still have to negotiate that with the state, but that's what we've kind of submitted when we did the application.
That's 70?
Seventy percent.
Counselor Meaning?
Jeff, I just wanted to, so is this housing going to be exclusively for veterans?
Yes.
There's just no, going to, this fine print, it's going to transfer it out when it's inconvenient to house our veterans?
No, that was part, part of the legislative transfer, had that language in there, that restriction. Yep.
Thank you.
One other question I have is, where would this be advertised? Like, how are you going to get residents inside of the, the building?
Good question. So we will have a marketing and lease-up plan as part of the closing that we're going into. We will advertise in local papers, we'll work with Director of Veterans Services here in the city, Mike Sweeney, he's been a big part of this project from the start. We're also in talks with a service provider from Boston, the New England Center for Veterans. They provide shelter services, they provide services in different locations, so that's a group that we're in, we're in talks with that potentially could be the service component, and they could help as well with the lease-up.
Okay, and you guys just confirmed the closing, so when do you think you're going to start making it look as beautiful as it does in the, in the diagrams?
So if we close in January, there'll be a month or so. So if we close in January, there'll be a month or so for construction mobilization. So hopefully, maybe March or so will be the spring of 2026 would be the start.
We'll be starting, okay. Councillor Mini?
And Jeff, certainly not holding you to this date, but what would be a reasonable expectation when someone is going to be living in the unit?
If the construction is completed, we're hoping a two-year construction period. So we're thinking maybe winter of 2027 completion. So I would think maybe lease-up would begin a little bit before then, have a little runtime, and probably January of 2028, we'll start moving people in.
Thank you.
Be a good, a good date.
I just want to say, this is obviously long overdue, but all the work that you guys have put into this, and everyone has put into this, from everyone from the state delegation on up, it's just, this is amazing that we're going to be presenting this to our veterans, especially our Lynn veterans, at 70%. I think that's a great number there. I just want to say that I thank everybody who did their work on this, and very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Councillor.
Yes, thank you so much, Jeff. This is awesome. 52 units, veterans only, and possibly 2027, we can start moving some veterans in. Are you guys hoping to do any resources for the veterans? Are they just going to be living there? Is there going to be like anyone on-site to like, provide them with information about their benefits and stuff like that?
Great question. We'll have on-site services. We'll have an agency coming in to do the services. Every person in there will have a case manager.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any more questions? Thank you so much, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me.
And what's the wish of the committee?
Motion adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Adjourned. That didn't happen.
Open up Ways and Means for Tuesday, October 28th.
Sorry. Councillor Annett, absent. Councillor Hogan?
Present.
President, Councillor Chakoudas?
Present.
President, Councillor Walsh?
Present.
President, Councillor Field?
Present.
Present.
Clerk, read the transfers.
Okay, we have a new transfer, $706,921.21 to the account of the fire payroll per collective bargaining agreement with Lynn 739.
Motion approved.
Second.
Councillor Annett, absent. Councillor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item.
Certified funds. We have $10,900 to Lynn Health Department Senior Center for the FY26 Title III B Grant Award.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A second? Roll call.
Councillor Annett?
Present. Oh, yes.
Yes, Councillor Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Field?
Yes.
Yes.
$65,000 to the Police Department for the FY26 Massachusetts Municipal Road Safety Program Grant.
Wish the Committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. $633,985.47 to the Police Department for the FY26 Mass Municipal Public Safety Staffing Program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. And $108,300 to the School Department for the FY26 FC 645B 21st CCLC Grant Program.
Wish the Committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Any other items? Spencer, do we need any emergencies on any of this?
Actually, that council transfer, if we could please have that as an emergency.
Okay. So we get a motion?
Motion for emergency.
Motion for emergency transfer, a second. Roll call.
Counsel Annett?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Any other items?
No new business.
So wish of the Committee?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. We're here for our second public comment session ever, and we just want to welcome everybody. And tonight, we have three speakers. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the rules?
Okay, we have the rules of the Lynn City Council with respect to public comment. Number one, regular meetings. A, under the provisions of Chapter 43, Section 98 of the General Laws, individuals and employees of the city have reasonable opportunity to be heard at the second meeting of the month, generally the fourth Tuesday of the month, except in July and August. Of the Lynn City Council, in regards to any matter, regardless of whether such matter is on the council agenda. B, the public comment period shall commence at 5:15 p.m. C, each speaker shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. D, no more than five speakers shall be permitted to speak during the public comment period unless this rule is waived by a majority of the full city council. E, an individual may sign up to speak before the city council, online via the city's website from 5:15 p.m. on the Thursday before the meeting until 3 p.m. the day of the meeting, or via telephone to the city council office on the day of the meeting from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. F, the individual should indicate their name, address, and the subjects that they are planning to address. G, individuals will be heard in the order that they signed up. H, once five speakers have signed up for a particular meeting, no further request to speak will be accepted. I, public comment is limited to Lynn residents unless rules are suspended. Please note these rules do not apply to public hearings, which are governed by state law. J, public testimony is not a public hearing or a question-and-answer period. K, an individual may request the assistance of an interpreter when they sign up to speak. L, residents who are unable to attend a meeting due to disability may sign up as one of the five speakers for public comment and forward their comments via email or regular mail to publiccomment@lynnma.gov. Their communication will be read during public comment time as if the person were present at the meeting. Please note that written statements must still fall within 120 seconds. M, speakers must always remain within the bounds of decorum. N, individuals will be allowed to deliver their address without interruption. O, during any public comment period, there shall be no direct reply to the speaker or comment from city council members or any city-appointed officials. P, the city council will rotate who shall preside over the public comment period as the chairperson. Q, no one shall delay, disrupt, or interrupt the city council proceedings, and the public comment period should be conducted in an orderly and peaceable manner. R, no person in attendance shall disrupt or interrupt any person who is speaking during the public comment period. S, no speaker may physically threaten or any elected or appointed city official or member of the audience. And T, no individual is permitted to speak at successive public comment meetings to ensure the voices of many residents are heard. Also, please note that Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20G, no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of the meetings of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting.
And at this time, I'd like to call my first speaker, Mr. Jeff Chelgren. Please state your name and address, for the record, please.
First, I'd like to say, great costumes. My name is Jeff Chelgren, 27 Ocean Street, Lynn, Mass. Can I begin?
And you may begin.
Great. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be able to speak to the city council. I am here today to identify the citizen petition has been submitted to the -- this afternoon to the mayor's office, Office of the Solicitors, and the city council. The petition is signed by 14 registered voters and seeks an investigation into the actions taken in relation to the implementation of the 2025 UV pilot program. The petitioners are specifically asking the city to address three questions, which are: One, whether the equipment selected for the UV pilot program complies with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations. Two, the appropriateness of the City of Lynn's response to complaints from butters, which includes evaluating actions taken by the Office of the Mayor's, City Council, Board of Health, and Police Department. And three, the impact of the program on the rights, health, and well-being of the residents living in the affected residential properties. The petitioners further request that the city proceed using the following process. First, hold an initial public meeting to allow community members to provide input and submit relevant documents and materials for consideration. And second, prepare and present an official letter detailing the findings of the review at a public meeting of the city council. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to call our second speaker, Mr. Robert Nado. Please state your name and address, for the record, please.
Robert Nado, 51 Herschel Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak and address the city council on a matter of what I consider public safety. May I approach here with the -- show these?
Sure. We can see it.
That shows a crosswalk in the city of Salem. It's only on two corners, but there's a five-corner one there. When you approach that area -- well, anything with a crosswalk that's green, I see them in Salem, Beverly, and Everett. It really captures your mind. When you see that, you don't forget that it's a crosswalk. Now, there are many distracted drivers, as we all know, and, believe me, I've seen more people stand in the crosswalks, and people just drive right along. One particular area is when the Buchanan Bridge. Try crossing that street where the Dunkin' Donuts is, getting on the other side, you don't have a chance. It's terrible. People going in and out. The other one is Eastern Avenue. There's another one there that totally, totally, all the time, people on crosswalks, people just ignore them. I don't know if they don't know the rules of the road, but when you see these crosswalks, it comes to your mind. It more or less tells you to be careful, and there's somebody maybe trying to cross. I think that maybe the council should consider a, maybe a pilot program near a school, or maybe another area that's well-traveled. And, you know, whatever you deem necessary is which area you can pick out. So hopefully, the council will give it serious consideration. I consider it a public safety hazard, considering all these distracted drivers. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up my third speaker, Mr. Joe Nedry. Please state your name and address, for the record, please.
Hi, it's Joe Nedry, 10 Ocean Street. Talking about the UV pilot tonight, the consequences and the fallout of that. The pilot was run in violation of the noise statute in Massachusetts, 310 CMR 7.10, which is a decibel level that can't be exceeded. The city and the leadership knowingly and deliberately ignored that statute throughout the operation of the pilot. They were notified multiple times. No action was taken. And secondarily, the Board of Health was usurped by the city council and the leadership for being able to do their job as laid out in Mass. General Law 111, Section 122. It's a violation of law as well. Moving on to the operation of the pilot, there was no due diligence in terms of what was investigated before it started. The consulting company did a poor job in terms of vetting potential problem areas, and that basically limited the number of operational days from a possible 99 to 39, where the pilot was actually operating. And now, we're hearing about another potential pilot in 2026. Our neighborhood has taken an undue burden for this folly of a project that everyone's committed to, but nobody's willing to do due diligence, project manage, or ask the really difficult questions. So I'm just here to call that out, to let it be known that there are serious problems with both the project that was run in 2025 and anything that's going to be done for 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all three members of our community for coming out today, and this concludes our public comment session. Thank you.